Good evening and welcome to Zoning Board of Appeals, December 10, 2018, public hearing. A matter of public business in front of us tonight, we have one new business, no continued business. If you have a cell phone, please place it on vibrator, turn it off at this time. If you care to wish in favor and opposition of the petition, please come to the lecture and state your name and sign in for the public record. This evening, alternate loading member will be Philip Gemana. Under new business, ZB 2018-47 for a variance, Mazac Realty, 493 and 509 Market Street. The applicant proposes to construct a three-story mixed-use structure on a vacant parcel. The proposed project is located in the urban M U zoning district. The project requires site plan review approval under Section 11.4, a special permit under Article 12, table of uses and a variance for parking under Section 6.1 from the zoning board and any other relief required. Is there a party here for the petitioner? Good evening, Consular.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Appeals. My name is Gregory Curtis. I'm an attorney here in Lowell, 144 Merrimack Street. I'm here on behalf of Mazac Realty, the owner of the property at 493 through 509 Market Street. Before you today, tonight, for the proposed construction of a new building on the site, this building was originally a restaurant bar room with units upstairs. It's now being proposed to build a very similar building, although the building that we're proposing is going to have parking in the rear of the building. The old building had no parking. It was right out to the street. It was built long before any zoning was required in that area. And we're looking to build something very similar. I think you have a picture of it in the plan. And this would include 15 residential units, which would be mostly on the second and third floor, and four commercial units on the ground floor, right on Market Street. Butts, a building that is what is a sack club, which is at the corner of Hanover and Hanover and Market. And then on the other side, it would come to the building, which is owned by a pastry shop, the Penny's, I think, the Greek pastry shop. And then you have the Olympia Restaurant. So we're looking tonight to get relief from 6.1, which is the parking. Requirements under the ordinance indicate that it would require 30 parking spaces. 30 spaces because we have 15 units. Each unit would have two bedrooms. They would require a parking space for each one. We feel that being in an urban setting as this is downtown, there are many areas in the city that have very little and no parking, but we're trying to provide at least one space per unit for residential and talk about possibly, you know, allowing parking that takes place down the street at the Dummer Street lot. So people didn't need to do off-street parking, especially in the evening. That lot is very much accessible. It's about 700 feet away from the existing location we're talking about, but it is an open lot. We feel that the style of the building, we're going to need to go before the Historic Board on this project, and we're also going before the Planning Board on January 7. But before you tonight, the relief we're looking for is the parking and then the special permit regarding the construction of the building on that lot. I'll open it up for questions. If you have any questions, we can do that. I think it basically fits in with the scheme of what is constructed down in that area. It's a vital part of the Market Street area. That area was, you know, completely built up for many, many years. It's going to provide housing in the downtown area. It's going to provide some commercial space in the downtown area. It's going to be a great-looking building and be in conformity with some of the other surrounding buildings and the architecture, even the architecture of the buildings across the street, which is the housing. And they've put all the new roofs on those buildings in the last 10 years or so to give them the pitch roofs, going away from that flat roof design. I'll open up the questions from the board.
Thank you, Consular. This time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. Hi, my name is Dave Bolet. Live at 113 Cabot Street, Lowell. And I'm the president and founder of the Acre Group Action, Acre Coalition to Improve Our Neighborhood. Looking forward to this project to pass, and hopefully it does. It reaches part of the upper Merrimack Street, connecting it to downtown. We need more businesses, more attractions. Right there, that area has been abandoned for a while. Up there, when the Cosmo was there, the building was falling down. And with the Historic and everything else, we had to go there. Back then, I was the Health Inspector for Lowell. I went there with him, the Building Commissioner, the Fire Department, everybody. We deemed that the building was unsafe and had to come down, with the agreement that something that's really similar to that go back up. And it couldn't be any more similar to what used to be on that property than the design they have. They're adding four different businesses to the area also. The acre is known for the, one of the areas that have the most longstanding businesses over 100 years, or about that. You had your Market Basket, you have your Midi Candles, you have Cody's, you have a bunch of different businesses. And we're also known for a place that there's no open spots for any businesses. Right now, you cannot, there's not a storefront in the acre that you can rent. If they are closed, it's for a certain reason, the building doesn't recode or whatever, but you can't rent a place. Anybody who does opening, like the Sizzling Kitchen just opened, they're doing terrific. There's a lot of places. So adding four more businesses to the acre neighborhood is going to be an absolute charm, and it's really going to help the people in the acre neighborhood. And it's just going to make it safe and walkable. There'll be more lights, because from there you have Charlie's Corner. Then, well, once the bridge is done, it's going to be a nice thing. You have the Sack Club. Then from there, you'll have these four businesses, Sophia's Kitchen, the Olympia. You can just see the streetscape. It's going to be perfect. So, reading all the rest of this, it's just going to be a great project and hope everybody works together to see what we can do to help make this pass. And I can't thank you enough for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Philip?
Yeah, good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Craig, I just have a few questions for you. How many dumpsters do you, are you going to have on the premise? Is that going to be one or two?
There are two. Most are all two-bedroom units. So the two-bedroom units, 15 units total for residential.
No, I'm talking about dumpsters. Trash.
Oh, trash?
Trash dumpsters. How many are you going to have?
You have a dumpster listed, shown in the left rear corner. If you're looking at the property from Market Street, it would be to the left rear corner, right near parking space number one. There's going to be a site for a dumpster.
Good. So it's just going to be one dumpster, right?
One dumpster at this point.
And that will be enough for 15 units plus?
It should be enough for the 15 units. I know-
Commercial space.
Depending how big that dumpster is, if it's an eight-yard dumpster or 10-yard dumpster, and it's picked up at least once a week. There's other situations where it may be picked up more than once a week. But depending if you're going to be using the commercial units in the front also, they'd be producing some waste, but more likely, most of it comes from the apartment buildings. But whether or not you would need more than one pickup a week, I know on the personal use, I have properties at the corner of Suffolk and Market Street, and I have a dumpster for 12 units, and it's an eight-yard dumpster, and it works perfect. There's, once a week, it gets picked up, and there's usually no issue unless you find people that like to dump things in your dumpster, and then you have to deal with it. But I think it would be adequate, and if it was not adequate, we would make it adequate regarding whether it's picked up more than once a week or becomes a larger dumpster for the site.
Okay, so the pickup is yet to be determined. The pickup is yet to be determined?
Yeah. It's determined that there'll be a dumpster. It's yet to be determined the size. And then, again, once you have the place occupied, how much, how big it is, and how many times it would be picked up during the week.
Okay, then, my other question is, have you ever, have you spoken yet to the lower Historic Board? The lower Historic Board. Have you spoken to them? Did they approve it?
I'm not, yeah. We need to go, we need to go in front of the Historic Board, and we're also going to the Planning Board. Planning Board is scheduled for January 7.
Yeah.
And Historic Board would probably be sometime in January.
Okay.
For the review of the type of building and the type of color siding and that type of thing. We're trying to bring this building to scope as a lot of the buildings that are in that area, color-wise, material-wise, size and shape of the building. It was a brick building prior, but it was in such bad repair, it couldn't be, it couldn't be saved at that time.
You know, I like the project because it brings money to lower. So I think those are just my concerns, and I wish you luck.
Thank you.
If you can have approval from the Historic Board and make sure, you know, probably the dumpster is enclosed, you know.
Yeah, I think they're, they require it to be, any dumpster is required to be enclosed unless you get a variance for that particular use from the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Philip Mark. I think it's important to note that you're creating 15 new parking spaces in that neighborhood, correct?
Right.
Something that's desperately needed. And then in addition, the proposal is to utilize the Dummer Street and perhaps the Airt Garage?
Yeah. Airt Garage is a little further, but that Dummer Street lot, it's pretty busy during the day. I work downtown, and I'm coming up to City Hall quite a bit. And you, that lot's pretty full during the day, but at night, very little use.
I agree.
People had to park overnight. It's a perfect location. It's lit. It's a short walking distance. You know, once that bridge gets completed at Hanover Street, it's going to really be a whole new development down there. You're going to have the corner where the Sack Club is, then you have the Olympia, which has been there for about 60 years or 70 years, and Sophia's. If there's a few more shops, whether they're, you know, retail shops or business shops or food shops, it's almost what's happening on Merrimack Street up this way. It's exciting to see, and it's a, it's a great-looking building that, again, there's, there's really a need for residential units in the area. These would be market-rate housing, but they'd be, you know, reasonable, reasonably priced two-bedroom units. They're not big units, but it's a, it's a nice unit, and most people may have one vehicle. A lot of people have one vehicle. Some people have no vehicles that are living downtown. You have access to everything downtown. You're within a couple of hundred yards or 300 yards of the Market Basket, so it's a great location for the downtown area, and all be, all new construction.
No, I think this project truly helps the revitalization of the area, and I consider it a welcome addition to the Acre. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, but I echo Mark's comments that I'm really excited about seeing this project happen because it's a, it's a missing piece right now in the streetscape. And having a lively streetscape with retail on the first level, as well as housing above, is just something that's, and I didn't realize that so much retail, there's so much of a need for retail that there's no empty locations right now. That's, that's great to hear. So there were some comments circulated by the city. I don't know if you're familiar with them, the ones especially by the city engineering department.
I have them in front of me.
And it looks like you added the dumpster to the plan that previously maybe not had been on the plan. Is that correct? At least it wasn't noticed by the engineering department.
I have a Board of Appeals plan. I don't know, they should have had that, but I'm showing the dumpster in the, in the back left corner of the building.
Yep. The comments stating that the pad and enclosure should be large enough for two dumpsters, one for trash and a separate dumpster for recycling.
One for recycling, for the cardboard and the plastic. Yeah, that's a very possible way of doing it. Sometimes, one can be a little bit smaller. You know, you have to really teach people to break down boxes, because they tend to throw big, open boxes and dumpsters, and it takes up a lot of room. But you could easily have two, where you'd have a recycling dumpster, and then also have just your trash dumpster, which mostly would be used by the residential people. You're not going to be able to have trash pickup. You know, the city's not going to do trash pickup on a building that large, so we have to do private, private pickup.
No?
No. So two dumpsters, they may be, you know, two that are a little bit smaller. As I said earlier, an eight-yard dumpster is a pretty good-sized dumpster, if that's something that would fit there. And-
Well, I think it's important to have a separate dumpster for recycling material.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that was one of the comments.
Maybe make it a condition, if it pleases the board, to provide, I'll work with TPD to provide a revised plan showing two dumpsters and an enclosure, one for recycling.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Great. And then, you know, it's a fair amount of parking that we're giving relief to. And in the past, we've asked for an administrative review after maybe six months, once you have occupancy permit, to come back or have an administrative review, just to understand if there's a problem being created by using the parking in the garage versus providing parking on site.
Yeah. We're hoping in the norm in that area is that people need at least one parking space for their unit. We have the configuration of coming in and making one-way, going behind the building and coming out. So it's conducive to people pulling in with one space per unit. A lot of times, you'll have those marked per unit, so people know they have their specific space that they're going into. And you still have the parking in the front of the building. That whole section of Merrimack Street is all metered along the front. So if people are coming to go to a restaurant, or they're going to the shop, they're going to have to use the meters. But as I said earlier, I think in the evening hours, after 6:00 PM, I don't think there's any requirement at the meters. So if people do want to go and park in Dummer Street, if there was a guest coming over, you can even park on the street after 6:00 PM without the need of putting money in the meters. And, you know, there's no requirement. I don't think there is a Lowell of, you know, no overnight parking. You can have, I know, and where I am and the area that I have, there's people on the street, Cross Street, Willie Street, all those streets, they park all night, because most of those older buildings have no off-street parking. So it's a, it's a real blessing when you can put a building up in and have at least one space per residential unit.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm really happy to see that we have a number of units that provide for handicapped access on the lower level. Patrick, there isn't handicap parking assigned to any of the spaces. Is that something that is not required? Or how does that work if you're providing handicapped units, but yet we're not providing handicapped, accessible parking?
Yeah, I'm sure there is a requirement. It's not something that's in zoning, so I'm not too familiar with it. I'm sure it would come up in a building code review or our engineer. But I don't know that it was commented in the comment memo that we received.
Yeah, it wasn't. And I'm kind of worried about where, it's a number of units that are handicapped accessible, and I think that that's a wonderful benefit that we're providing in this plan. I was just wondering if we could make it a condition to work with TPD to provide handicapped, accessible parking. I think it's, what, three units that we're looking at potentially with handicapped accessibility here?
The accessibility also, handicapability could possibly be on Market Street. I mean, there's many areas in downtown or on Merrimack Street that have handicap-
Would need a sign.
Right, exactly.
Right? So we'd need handicapped, accessible parking somewhere, right? You're right, as long as it's addressed, because handicapped people still drive.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
And I think it's important to have that addressed. And then, I think I had one more. Oh, so this is a prime location for students, I think. And I think that it's a great idea to address the student population, the growing population at the school. And they have bikes. And I was wondering if we could provide a bike rack on site to provide a way of securing bikes rather than requiring them to bring them up to the third floor or the second floor in that stairway. So maybe a bike rack on site.
Well, you have, you do have going around the back of the building and then coming along the, where you see that 88.5 feet.
Doesn't take much.
It could possibly easily be, there's enough width there-
I agree.
To have an area that you could put a bike rack in, even if you put two or three in a row at an angle, as long as they get locked up, I think it's better. We really don't want people bringing bikes into the building. It only causes issues.
I agree.
But if you can have them secure, that's, that's definitely an issue. I think there's definitely plenty of room to put a bike rack on that alley area. You know, these are areas that if they had to be moved, they could be moved. But there's an old right-of-way on the right side where you see that alley. I don't anticipate that will be blocking that for any particular purpose, but a thing like a bike rack is something that nobody usually has an issue with.
I just see this as an opportunity for-
Oh, yeah.
-that population to be renting here. And we want to provide for them an opportunity to secure their bikes rather than securing them to the meters on the street or poles or something to just be a nuisance for the pedestrians.
I agree with that. And you have bike lanes throughout the downtown now and bike lanes in different places. So hopefully that encourages that. And you're getting more and more university students. It's getting closer and closer to, to the downtown area.
The last comment isn't a request for a condition, but it's just, have you had any thoughts of solar panels? I know that we have Steve Stoll to go through. We are doing a solarized Lowell program in the city where there's discounts being provided for people to take advantage of. And you do have a great roof for south exposure, so it might be something to consider. Solarized Lowell program, I think, runs through the end of February.
Yeah.
And there are good discounts being provided through the Revision Energy in the city. So something to consider.
The Historic Board would have to look at too, I would imagine.
I know. I know. I understand.
If they're up high enough, they won't see them on the back? Or, that's a south-facing roof.
It's a great roof.
Yeah, that's a south-facing roof, and that would get a lot of sun.
So, that's all I had. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis Van.
I don't really have any concerns with the chairman. All my colleagues kind of address them. I do want to say, I think this project is going to be vital, not just to the acre, but to downtown, which, you know, it's kind of the bridge to the heart of the city. So I think this development with the addition of the units and the commercial business use on the, on the ground floor be a, be a great addition to the whole city. So I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Well, you've heard the comments of the board, and you've read through the comments and your agreeance. It seems as though we have a few conditions. Just a dumpster area notice, six-month administrative review, a handicap TPD, as well as installation of bike racks on the public way. We'll put those in the-
I think those will, most of those will come up again when we go before the-
For both boards.
Planning Board. And we're happy to address those. I think we can work with the city to make sure that, you know, we want to keep this a viable site that's clean and people have access to. And I think it's a great improvement that someone's willing to spend the money in the downtown area on a lot that, you know, they could leave it vacant. You don't want to do that. You want to see something improve the area. And my client's willing to do that. He's been downtown and in the, in the acre area for over probably 75 years between my client and his family. And they've always been very in tune to what the city's doing and trying to do the best possible projects. And I think this will be a great asset to that part of Market Street.
And I agree. And I want to thank Mr. Bolet for coming out this evening and speaking in, in favor of this petition. I, it comes to no surprise to me that you're here tonight, Representative Mr. Kessangian.
Yeah.
When, when the city's moving forward and, and projects are looking to be had and looking to enhance the city, both by our view, our perception, our rehabilitation in bringing in both the residential and commercial, and then being as well-prepared and working with all the departments. Once again, it, it really shows what Lowell's all about, that Lowell people come together and we look to make the, make the city a better place to live and encourage our university students. We encourage, lack of a better term, less transportation in the city with bikes and so forth. So I think it's a great project. I appreciate all the comments of the board. And if we're all in agreeance to those four conditions, we can move forward. The only question I have is, you want, should we have a singular or a two-vote? We can encompass it under one vote, correct? This is, okay. Fair enough. Any other comments by the, any board members? Happy and Sid may have a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2018-47. The applicant is Mazac Realty for the variances at 493 and 509 Market Street, with the four conditions. One, administrative review after six months after the project's occupancy. Two is to provide, to work with TPD to provide two dumpsters, one being recycling. Three, to work with TPD to provide installation of bike racks. And four, to work with TPD to provide a handicap parking space.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve the conditions.
Member Peck?
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier?
Approve the conditions.
Member Jimena?
Approve the conditions.
Consul, you've been approved unanimously. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for bringing this project forward, Mr. Kessangian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward, under other business, we have none. Finally, we have minutes for approval for November 26, 2018. Anyone have any comments with the minutes? Make a motion to accept?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for the meeting on November 26, 2018.
May I have a second?
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call on the minutes.
Chairman Perrin?
Acceptance of the minutes, November 26. Acceptance of the minutes, November 26.
Member Peck.
Approve of the minutes.
Member McCarthy.
Approve of the minutes.
Member Brier.
Seconds.
Member Jimina.
Approve of minutes.
Thank you. That being said, this is our last meeting of 2018. I want to thank TPD and staff for all the work they've done this year, keeping the board prepared, updating us in a timely manner with plans and comments from TPD and other department heads. I want to thank the board, each member, for your professionalism and your dedication throughout the year to the board and one another and to the residents of the city. And I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a prosperous new year. Any other comments?
Just through you, Mr. Chairman, I do want to echo the same sentiments, especially to the TPD staff, Mr. Burns, Ms. McCall, the other gentleman I-
Jared.
Jared, yep. They've been very gracious with all the information and communication with us, always getting back. At least, I know for me, when I have questions, I call them, I email them, they give back to me. So I appreciate that, and as always, I appreciate working with my colleagues. You guys are a bunch of great guys and professionals, so I appreciate that all my seven years I've been on the board, so thank you.
Thank you, Van. Any other comments?
Yes, I also just want to give my appreciation to, you know, TPD. You guys are very swift. Whenever I ask for any information, you send it right away. Thank you very much. Then to the board members, no, I came on board raw while you're helping out. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. You know, that's, you gave me an opportunity to serve my city. Thank you.
Any other board members? Comments?
I just want to make, three, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make, echo the comments, but I've been on the board maybe seven or eight years now, and I think this is one of the most proactive TPD groups that we've worked with, that I've worked with. And I think you've really stepped it up this year and really made at least it a lot easier for myself to understand what's coming before us and to be prepared. And my fellow board members have been very, very supportive, and I'm really glad to be on the board. I think that this has been one of the better years from my particular serving here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That being said, any other comments? We will close out 2018. Meeting is adjourned. We have a motion for adjournment.
Strike that.
We have a motion for adjournment.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Aye, motion adjourned.